The staffing configuration in the supplemental memo deletes the director. Through further discussion, the OPR director suggested that the director who oversees the community center, the Rainbow Community Center, can oversee both sites.
That's not true. And in fact, I can tell you unless they intend to increase the salary of the site director at Rainbow, he cannot, and has indicated that he cannot. And that was never communicated to me. Again, the city administrator gave me her word when we met on the 22nd or 23rd of last month, that we would maintain the staff that was there.
That's not true.
That's absolutely not.
But what we said, and Fred and Lawana were in the room, I would ask for them to assist me with the set of facts. What we said is that we would fold them into an existing open recruitment, and they need to meet minimum qualifications.
That's absolutely correct, but it was to maintain the staffing that was in place. There was no conversation about having the Rainbow.
The report already notes that we know for a fact that some do not meet minimum qualifications. I do believe in that conversation we raised with you.
No, you did not. No, you did not.
I would ask either Lawana or Fred to confirm the facts because we did spend time on how we were going to begin the transition.
We talked very specifically about the staff that was in place. There was no conversation about having the Rainbow Center director.
Lawana, can you please tell us that you were responsible for overseeing the staffing transition side?
Good evening, members of the council. Lawana is President Employee Relations Director. At the meeting with Ms. Councilmember Brooks, we did discuss maintaining a staffing ratio at the center so that all the programs, the staff were currently, programs that are there, could be facilitated. As the city administrator stated there, in previous reports, it was clear that there were certain employees who were currently working there that would not meet the minimum qualifications.
There is one employee that did not meet the minimum. And we talked about her, but we never discussed the Rainbow director.
At that meeting, we did not discuss the Rainbow, the current director of Rainbow taking over both facilities. That was proposed to us after that meeting by the renovation.
Not with me. Not with me, right?
Not at that meeting. Absolutely. No. But we did discuss. We did discuss that we would be looking at staffing to maintain the programs. I don't believe we made a commitment that every single person there would be there. What we said is that we would keep the programs going.
Thank you. It's the second half of my question. So that's clarified now. The second. I don't even. The second half of my question is to the city clerk. Would you read the bifurcated piece that Ms. Chaff, would you just read what, because I heard it as a general procedure and not specific, so I want to have it written to the record.
To the chair, to Councilmember Broder. It was to schedule the report with the full council as far out as July 12.
What report?
The follow-up. You have to forgive me because I didn't choose reading that back, so I had to cancel it again.
Oh, Ms. Chaff got it written down. You want Ms. Chaff to repeat it?
Sure.
Councilmember Chaff, can you repeat what you said?
To schedule a report with possible action directly to the full council no later than its meeting of July 3, 2012, containing the full results of the city administrator's continued investigation of these matters within her existing contracting and budgetary authority, including all nonconfidential evidence gathered as well as her management recommendations for ensuring better compliance throughout the organization with all laws and policies going forward. Thank you.
So I took that in to mean that you're going to continue looking at this, that a lot of the issues are systematic and apply to all of us and to staff, and I would have no trouble understanding the lessons learned and how that gets put forward. So that's what, and if you get some more information as you do that, to continue putting it forward just like we did now.
Excuse me, but I'm sorry, Councilmember Broder, I understand that, but I need to, again, caution you that Councilmember Brooks has a potential conflict of interest with respect to the motion.
She heard that.
She should recuse herself.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I had the floor. If you want to debate it with Ms. Brooks at another point, she heard you.
You were previously clarifying what the motion was. Now that you're getting into discussion, I want to be on the record that Councilmember Brooks, if this matter is discussed, she should recuse herself from discussion on the motion for the reporting of the chair.
You know, maybe city staff has to recuse themselves who are sitting on this dais because they may have done something. So I'm having trouble because I'm not seeing this, and maybe I'm missing something, and maybe there's a hidden agenda, and maybe I'm not smart enough to get it. But I'm not seeing this as directed at Ms. Brooks. I'm seeing this as we have a problem, the city administrator, and this is where we thanked her, has put out that problem, and we're getting a follow-up report that may include part of Ms. Brooks' actions, but it's also going to include city staff action. It could include someone else that we're saying we're not going to hide from it. You can keep digging and bring it back to us. So I don't know why one person has, but I'm not going to debate the conflict issue, but I am going to say I don't have trouble with the second half of your request because I think this should not be. We should understand it. We should have good procedures. And I took that in that spirit.
Vote it down.
So can I speak to the conflict issue? As I heard the motion, it was looking at system issues throughout the organization. It was not directed to me specifically. And so I, as a council member, have the ability to vote on issues that affect the overall organization, and I do not have a conflict of interest in that regard. And so it seems like the city attorney's office is trying to push the agenda. And so somehow the statement, very clear statement about throughout the organization has somehow been changed to read as before. That is not the motion. If I may, Councilmember.
Madam City Attorney.
No, this is certainly not an effort to target you, Councilmember Brooks. It is simply a potential.
Can you guys please let us have our discussion, please?
It would be impotent not to advise you that there is a potential conflict of interest under the political reform act for you to take action on this item. It affects you because you can be voting. It doesn't affect staff. The staff would not be voting on this item. So it's a specific conflict that goes to you being an elected official and voting on this item.
One more question.
And I'm sorry because I really am trying to get some understanding with respect to the issue. The assumption, because you're trying to say that I have a conflict of interest based on a peculiar interest, which means me getting paid as a council member, you've taken leaps that we are not yet. And there has been no indication that anybody is pursuing any action under the name of the law because that's what you're referring to. That isn't the motion. That isn't what this is about. This is about looking at the organization's system. And we should always be looking at the organization. And so I don't see how in looking at the organization, I have a financial interest.
This investigation could uncover facts, could uncover statements and so forth that could result in evidence. And actually, there already is some significant evidence in the investigation.
The comments that keep coming from the city attorney's office that you're in the direction of the council.
That there, so the investigation could result in further additional facts establishing that there was a violation of Charter provision 218, and that is the concern with the conflict of interest.
Mr. De La Fuente.
Yes, sure. With all due respect, I think that the city attorney has the responsibility to give us her opinion that we have the right to disagree. I don't see how, how would be a conflict of interest and an issue that we are debating. And I don't think that, I don't even want to bifurcate the motion. I will support the first part of the motion. I don't think we need to direct the city administrator to come back within six months or three months on the report. She already stated that I believe that she's looking at the whole system, at the systematic problems, and she can make recommendations in three months or four months about how to fix it. I don't think that we need to bifurcate. And I don't think that a council member should not be allowed to debate the issue. I take the city attorney for her opinion, but I think I'm ready to vote, and I'm ready to vote on the first part of the motion. I will not support any part of the motion. So can we just go on?
Can I just add one thing here to the city attorney? Following your logic, Ms. Brooks should not sat up here all night because you're worried about what may be found in the future, but you're identifying something that is already out, so it's non-logical.
Well, the discussion previously was there was no motion until Councilmember Chaff made the motion concerning bringing back the report. Then that is a specific action that the council has.
But I was talking about the presentation of the investigation as it consisted. So either it is a conflict in the future that started in the past, so she was up here debating the investigation in the past that you're worried about. So you can't have, let her have been up here all evening and then say, but she can't talk about, she can't vote on something that may, we don't even know what's going to come out of it. It's just, in my opinion, it's not logical.
It's the vote that triggers the conflict of interest.
If you, if, I can't vote, but if not, you could just vote on the first, your first motion, and anybody can schedule a report within, anybody can come to rules and.
Mr. President, I think we could argue about this. The city attorney has given advice that you want to give, but nobody can force Ms. Brooks not to vote, so let's just vote.
Right.
Okay. So the substitute motion is on, a bifurcate.
Well, we can't even do that because there was no substitute motion put in for the $55,000.
She ran it in, but there was no notice.
It's a substantive change?
Right. Over $55,000 is a substantive change. I'm surprised that.
The amount designated in the second point, it's in the title, but it's also in the resolution, appropriated, prorated, one-time funds in the amount of $67,000. As I understand it, the proposal is to reduce that appropriation to $55,000. The council can reduce the appropriation. That is within the notice. You cannot increase it, but you can reduce it.
One more vote, then.
That's the motion, right?
So I'm sorry, what's the resolution on this?
It's the one dated February 29th, and so on the second page, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, where is?
Well, actually, in the title on the first page, under number two, that's the appropriation for $67,000. My understanding is the motion, the substitute motion would reduce that $67 to $55. So I'm concerned on the first part of the motion.
Well, if I could ask a question, I'm sorry, Mr. President. So it says to assign $48,000 of the $62 to $55,000?
That would be.
That would remain the same. So that's the part that's not changing. I'm trying to be clear about, for the purposes of the record, where does the $55 come in?
In number two, in the title, appropriated, prorated, one-time funds for fiscal year in the amount of $67, the motion would change that to $55,000.
That is where $55 is affected.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Chaff.
I could just walk there. If you are looking at the resolution, the title, number two, the green, the green is the same as the white, the title under number two would change as the city attorney just explained. The 11th, whereas, on page two, it says, whereas the recommended staffing level that has been deemed appropriate to continue service at the center includes 1.0 Recreation Program Director. So that would be changed to conform with the staffing configuration contained in the supplemental report. If you'd like me to read it into the record, I can. Is that necessary? 1.75 Recreation Specialist 1, permanent part-time, 30 hours per week. 1.5 Recreation Specialist 1, temporary part-time, three positions. 1.0 Recreation Specialist 2, temporary part-time positions, two positions. And then the second to request were the last two further resolved paragraphs. The second to last paragraph says, that funds in an amount not to exceed $67,000, that would be changed to $55,000. And then we're just suggesting that we reverse the order of those two, those last two paragraphs because it's a little confusing. Because the intention, as we've always understood it, is that the CDBG money get assigned to Parks and Rec, and that that $48,000 is part of what is now $55,000. So just by switching the order of those paragraphs, I think it just clarifies that it's not, it's not any other changes. Does that help?
Madam City Administrator, do you wish to speak?
I had heard a comment as part of the motion that just raised a fight for me. There was a date that was thrown out. I'm not certain if it was July 12th or July 3rd.
July 3rd.
I would just note for the city council that we have a significant amount of reorganization to complete as well as preparing for the mid-year budget cycle, all that need to take place before July 1st. And so I would express to you that this would be a date that I would want flexibility on to bring back at a later time if that's the pleasure of the council. But July 3rd is a date that always majors because of the significant milestones that are dependent on July 1st.
Well, we're going to bifurcate.
Yeah, I just.
So votes may not be on the second piece. So let's just take the vote.
Is it bifurcated or not?
That's what she wanted. She wanted to bifurcate.
Okay. Let's take the motion.
Okay, on the motion to bifurcate the, such that the resolution is adopted to change the $67,000 to $55,000, I'm trying to be specific, to switch the order of the last two resolutions, and on the 11th, whereas, to change the staffing configuration to match the recommendations of the supplemental report. Is that correct in terms of the first part of the bifurcation?
I'm sorry, I was not listening. Your staff has a written copy of the motion. Could you provide it?
So adopt the resolution, but changing the total application for staffing to $55, I said that. Switching the order of the last two resolutions to make clear that the $48,000 of the CDBG funds must be assigned to Parks and Rec prior to application of the $55,000. I mentioned the switching of the resolutions. And omitting the 11th, whereas paragraph to reflect the staffing configuration recommended in staff supplemental report. I said that also. That's the first part of the argument.
Is that correct, Council motion?
All right. I don't see that they're straight, that give you enough.
Enough, I'm sorry.
That give you enough, if that means in that motion, that Parks and Rec will be taking over the operation, and that will be the allocation, right?
We did, we offered a lower cost option, and in terms of, I should clarify at this point, there has been discussion in terms of a director model. Either the existing director can oversee both of the, both the teen center and the recreation center. And Audrey also has a concept that I think is also worth looking into as an option, a roving position that ensures, ensures adequate management oversight of the facility. And so that's, that's a lower cost auction strategy. Lawana can speak to the differences in the other position changes, but we wanted to offer alternatives for transit.
But you will, well, but you will be, you will be making that decision, you will be making that decision, which model? You will be responsible for making that decision.
Yes, yes. I will, we will work with, the transition team is Lawana, Fred and I. We will, we will explore the issues. We will work with Audrey and determine which one fits within her resources and what can be absorbed. It's the staffing structure, it's the staffing condition that we're in, and so we wanted to make sure there was a lower cost alternative.
All right, substitute. Can I go with the question?
Sure. And on the first part of the bifurcated motion that I am not going to read again, the first share of burdens.
Madam Vice Mayor.
The question. Broder?
No. Do you have a point there?
Let me, I'm a little confused, but I am confused now, so. So this would allow, allow the city administrator to look at the staffing and either use that new model of, using the same executive director of the, of the senior center, right? The Rainbow Center as the teen center, is that correct?
The lower.
One of the options.
The lower cost model changes some of this staffing configuration from page nine in the original staff report and offers, offers a different staffing configuration. The one significant change that I'm raising here is that it deletes the director position, and the two options that can be explored for oversight is there's a director within feet of the teen center that can oversee the complete facility as a campus and look at the services from, from that perspective, or have a roving director type oversight model. And it's, it's an option that Audrey certainly is willing to investigate and explore and potentially implement. It does require a more review on our end, but knowing that there's a director next door, there is, there is, our best judgment was there is significant resources with a lower cost option in a roving model that we could provide a management oversight.
Can you guys please let us conduct this meeting? If you don't want to respect anybody else, respect me as chair, and let us conduct this meeting.
Any part, I heard you correctly, Vice Mayor, it was no? Carneyhead?
Yes.
Nego?
Yes.
And Chaff?
Yes.
And Reed?
No.
And that portion of the motion fails with four no's, three i's, and one accent. And so the second portion of the motion, which is to schedule a report with possible action directed to the full council no later than its meeting of July 3rd.
Can we have? Yes. Given the city administrators wanting a little flexibility, are you, as a mover, are you open to giving them that flexibility?
I'm not willing to change the motion at this time, but if the need arises when we get closer, I'm certainly happy to reschedule it closer to the deadline.
Through rules.
Rules would be.
Can I ask you, through the chair, can I ask you why? I mean, if you did admit why, then she has a moment.
Because July 3rd is the second to last scheduled meeting of our legislative year. Because July has five Tuesdays in it. So I feel, I prefer, again, I'm flexible when we get closer. Couldn't rules, it couldn't, without it coming back to the full council?
You know, it was previously implied, and I'm sorry, through the chair, it was previously implied by the city attorney's office.
I stated before, before you do all this, because this part, I don't really care about. So I really need to go with the rest.
I'm sorry. It was previously implied that the whole council was the dominant body, and the rules committee as a committee of four would not be able to move a council item.
All right. I commit that if there is a problem, I would bring a motion to the council to delay it, but at this time, I'd like, that's the second to last meeting of our legislative year. So as a, it's either.
Let's just follow the question.
Can I just add something?
We spent an incredible amount of time on this.
I'm sorry. I just, I want to manage your expectations on the part of the city administrator's office. I've heard the term, thrown out here, the term investigation. The term and audit is, there are expert audit standards. That is a field of expertise that requires compliance with federal audit standards. We in our office do not have that expertise to do an audit. The same with an investigation. There are expert standards that establish what it takes to do an investigation. I said clearly, we don't, I am not doing an investigation, I am doing a management review. And so if the suggestion is that anybody thinks I'm doing an investigation on the part of council, that is not what I am doing. I don't have, I said it clearly in the report, I don't have the in-house expertise to do that. I am doing a management review. Mr. President, that is the intention of the maker of the motion. Everything that the city administrator said is consistent with the motion.
Ms. Brunner?
No.
Can you add anything else?
No, I think we should help the administrator be able to do this and give it any time she wants, and I don't think one council member should be the controller of the time. I'd rather have it as the city administrator, but it's not worth fighting.
No, but I'm, no, but I'm in total agree with you. I don't want to have my colleague be in control of the schedule. I mean, I won't give my rights up to sit up here to any individual item, certainly I don't want to do it.
But I am in support, I am in total support of having a management review, having you come back, systematic issues that you bring back to us, and I just would like that to be in a time. Mr. President?
Yes.
Through the chair, could I ask Ms. Brunner what time would you feel would be appropriate?
I would say any time before the, you know, we definitely have it before the end of the session.
Okay. I would amend, I would take that amendment before the end of the legislative session.
Just to give her the flexibility, I mean.
I've accepted, I've accepted the amendment.
I will likely come back with a request to defer. I'm just putting that out there. I know I need to develop a mid-year budget cycle and accomplish significant reorganization to meet our budget numbers and our fiscal reality. If it's July 12th, I believe the due date for it to be distributed would be around July 1st. That's not what I'm going to be focused on at that time. And I'm just putting it out there because I want to be very clear, if this is a deadline or a timeframe that I don't think I can meet because of the budget numbers that I need to meet.
So that's fine, as long as we do it before the end of the year, the end of the year, what is it bigger?
Amendment, amendment, accepted. Okay. For the end of the legislative.
What's that? The end of the, end, no, something, a legislative view, is what we said.
Management review. That's really through the end of July 31st, it's July 31st.
That's July 31st. And you can come back and ask us to defer if you have to.
It's not like the first time we're doing this, Madam City Administrator. You know, we can, we can, you know, the reality, the reality is that it's always come back and say that you're not able to do it, so.
And on the second portion of the bifurcated motion, additionally to schedule a report of possible action, due back before the end of the legislative year, which really speaks to the management review.
Correct.
And then, Vice Mayor Brooks is on, I'm sorry, um, she's on her seat, I'm sorry. Brunner?
Aye.
Aye.
David Pointe, Kaplan is excused, Kurt again.
Aye.
Nigal?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
And Reed?
Aye.
And that motion passes with a vote of six i's, two a's.
Okay, so now, we have to go back because the first part of having the center continue failed. So, either we have to put a new motion on the floor, or I think more profitable, you know, I think we go back to the original, which was to accept the, the resolution of six, it was just brought tonight, yes.
The original motion with the sixty-seven thousand is the motion that was on the floor.
Oh, but Kurt, but-
You had your opportunity. If the motion that was on the floor-
Mr. President, I have a procedural question.
Go ahead, Ms. Shep, and ask it.
I, in all, in all honesty, I do have a procedural question. I made a motion for a bifurcated vote. My motion, I, I don't think my motion failed because half of it-
And you're going to close the center on a procedural issue?
I voted yes to keep the center open.
But you're now, on this procedural issue, going to close this teen center because we don't have the votes here?
I just, I just want to know what the answer to that question is.
You, you did a bifurcated vote.
Yes.
So, you, you can go back to the original item, with, with having failed on the first part. You, you took a bifurcated vote, so you split it and you can go back to-
So, it can go back?
Yes, because of the, the second part of the vote you took was a motion, it's not actually part of the resolution, it's before you tonight.
Okay. Okay. Call the question.
On the original motion made by Vice Mayor Brooks.
The second part.
This one, everybody, be clear.
For Council members with the sixty-seven thousand, not correct.
So, Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
David Pointe?
Aye.
Kaplan, obviously is excused, I'm sorry. Kurt, again?
Aye.
Nigal?
Aye.
And Reed?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Yes. Can you, can you chair?
And on the last and final item this evening, item S-13. It is the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum Complex, the first iteration authorizing a new name with JRDB, which is a national-
Excuse me?
And the second resolution authorizing a professional services contract with Lampier Gregory. If I show twenty-five parts, twenty-five speakers?
Come on, guys, please.
Good evening, Fred Blackwell, Assistant City Administrative. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to be able to provide this report to you. Just want to acknowledge at the beginning though, that I'm making the report, but there are also a number of other staff who have been contributing to this, who will be available to answer questions as well. The Director of Neighborhood Investment, Greg Conner, our Building and Planning Director, Eric Exstac, and the City Attorney, Dan Rossi, as well as Larry Guayanos, who's the Project Manager for this area. Just a few things I wanted to do really quickly. I wanted to talk a little bit about the project area and describe it, wanted to describe the, the process that staff went through to select a team that we have before the debate, talk a little bit about what the recommendation is and the rationale for that recommendation, and then close out with a little bit of word about the, the funding. The area is the subject of the recommendation tonight is a combination of two areas. One, the existing Coliseum site, which is the home to ODOT, as well as the Oracle Arena, also houses the north and south parking lots associated with the area, a number of parcels that have been acquired by the redevelopment agency over the last couple of years, as well as some property on property. That's Area 1. Area 2 is the area south of the Coliseum area, the Business Park area, which includes port property as well as private land and is a substantial part of the property that actually falls under design review and the kind of entitlement process that is run by the Port of Oakland. Both of those areas together constitute about seven hundred and fifty acres in the southeastern part of the city. And we released the, an RFP for a specific plan, the EIR, in October of 2011 to ask for consultant teams and development teams to be able to do that work. In response to the RFP, we received six proposals and a due channel consisting of city staff and court staff actually interviewed all of the applicants. The, the RFP itself asked for proposals around how they would, or teams would approach the, the specific plan, the EIR process, but it also asked for teams to submit qualifications if they were interested for developers and, or, or potential master developers for the area. Staff reviewed and did the interviews over the course of the holidays and had selected the JRDB HKS for a city team to bring before you today. Just a little bit of word about that team, JRDB is a local Oakland-based planning firm that has a home base here, but Tentacles International has been doing this kind of master planning and, and specific plan work in a number of jurisdictions. HKS, also a member of that team, is an internationally known sports facility architect and financing firm. They are the designers of the last two Super Bowl sites, Lucas Oil Stadium this year and last year Cowboys Stadium as well are products of their work. One of the things I want to highlight about the HKS team member as well though, is that they also bring substantial kind of technical capacity to do the kind of demographic and market analysis that is going to be absolutely critical on this project to securing the kind of private financing that is going to be necessary in order to pull off that part of the project. And the third member of the master team is another team, is Ford City, who is known for both residential and commercial development. They are the, used to be the owners of the Nets and are currently, excuse me, working on the development of Atlantic Yards, which will be the home for a new arena in Brooklyn for the, for the Nets. The staff recommendation, which is highlighted in the report, is twofold. One is to enter into an exclusive negotiation agreement with a master development team for Area 1 and associated with that a $1.6 million predevelopment grant in order to move the predevelopment phase of that work forward. And the, the second part of that recommendation is for a professional services agreement with Lampier and Gregory and also a team of consultants to actually do the specific plan for both Area 1 and Area 2 in the EIR. The deliverables that are associated with the E&amp;A are manifold, but they include a conceptual and master plan for Area 1, some market feasibility analysis, financing plan for that area, as well as revenue projections and analysis to make sure that anything that we propose in terms of the next phase of work is actually supported by the specific revenue projections. Both scopes of work will include both kind of sports arena alternatives and non-sports arena alternatives. As you all know, they are, the sports franchises that we are working with right now are in various stages of discussions with other jurisdictions, as well as looking some of them at other specific sites. It's important in that regard for us to make sure that the, the, the planning work involves non-stadium alternatives as well. And so, I wanted to highlight that fact. Just a, a couple of things I wanted to mention about the reason why we are approaching this recommendation in this way. One is that the RFP actually called for the submission of developer qualifications and also stated that we, the city reserved the right to decouple Area 1 from Area 2 in order to be responsive to the current circumstances with regards to a little bit of a greater sense of urgency to move that area forward. It is important to note that putting this package together in this way, i.e. with the E&amp;A as well as a professional services agreement, does not foreclose on the ability for us to bring in other developers later on in this process. And I think it's important for the council to know that it'll probably be necessary for other developers to be brought into this process, given the, the size and scope of what we are talking about and barking off. The third reason why we have brought the recommendation to you in this way is because there are potential conflicts associated with one contract being provided that would both be for the planning and development of the same area. There's a state law or statute 1090 that basically says public officials are not able to kind of plan for projects where they would also potentially benefit. And when you bring on a consultant, they become, they become kind of a, a public agent and therefore, the notion of having a contractor where they were both planning this project area, but also had to potentially achieve economic benefits as a developer with a genuine 1090 problem. So, by separating these two actions into a, a professional services agreement for the specific plan, the EIR, and having an E&amp;A for the master development component is one that we thought was legal or approved from a legal point of view. The last thing I wanted to mention in terms of positioning this this way is we have a bit of a sense of urgency in terms of being able to advance this project. Just, I wanted to summarize really quickly the discussions that we've been having with the teams. A lot of this has been public information and detailed in the press, and so, I think it's just also important to underline it here. With regard to the Oakland A's, it, it has been made very clear to us that they are actively pursuing locating San Jose. There are a number of obstacles for that to happen. The Giants have, it's both, expressed quite a bit of opposition to the notion of the territorial rights for San Jose going to the A's as well. There will be likely a public vote in San Jose before a deal like that is approved. And so, there, while they are, the A's are clearly pursuing the deal down there, that there are many obstacles, as I said, to that actually happen. With regard to the Raiders, the Raiders have expressed the desire to stay in Oakland with a, a brand new facility. However, they are being courted by a variety of interests in Southern California and they are, the NFL has actively been kind of pushing a model that they have implemented in New York where you have multiple teams playing in one stadium. And it's been offered up that, that, that model could be one that is pursued at the new Santa Clara stadium once that is developed and the possibility of the Raiders and the Niners both playing in that stadium. With regard to the Warriors, we've had a number of conversations with them. They are the farthest away from an expiring lease, so it's time to work with that team. However, they are also being courted by the jurisdiction. San Francisco has already talked about the various sites that they may be able to offer up to the Warriors. And so, we are also wanting to make sure that Oakland puts its best foot forward there. And so, for those reasons, there's a bit of a sense of urgency to engage these franchises in a deeper level of dialogue, discussion and negotiation that would allow for with just a pure planning process. The, the last thing I want to mention here is the funding. There was $4 million allocated for the, the planning of Coliseum City in the funding agreement that was adopted by council in March of 2011. The funds associated with that funding agreement came from the Coliseum area, project area, redevelopment project area, which means that the, the use of those funds is limited to the Coliseum project area. There was a, quite a bit of discussion at the committee about the studying of other alternative sites, including some potential down sound sites. And so, I just want to make clear that the funds that are available for this project are not available for use outside of the, the Coliseum project area. The last thing that I want to say about funding however, is that the funding agreements, or the funding agreement that was adopted by council in March, is a, is a funding agreement that includes a transfer of assets, both in terms of property and in terms of money and responsibility for project implementation. The legislation that was adopted to eliminate redevelopment at the state level highlights these kinds of transactions, is transactions that will be under review at the state level. The opinion from our city attorney is that, this is consistent with the language in the Assembly Bill, which is 26, one X, one X 26, basically says that projects like this and transfers that have third-party agreements will not be subject to clawback. And so, action by council tonight, we think should protect these funds from the clawback clause associated with this new legislation. That concludes staff presentation. I'm available, as well as other staff are available to answer council's questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your, can we hear the question? Yes, Ms. Nigal.
I, I just want to make sure that I understood what you said. With respect to the funding, a lot of my constituents, of course, are interested in the nine-year alternative. And what you're saying is that the funding that you, that we had allocated could not study the nine-year alternative as far as the planning study, but could it be included in the SEQUA analysis as an alternative? How would that, how is that supposed to be?
Yeah, so, yeah, the, this is a, a very area-specific proposal that we're bringing to you because it actually, the funds that are allocated for it are from the Coliseum project area. And so, the focus of it has to be on activities that go on within the Coliseum project area.
But in terms of the SEQUA analysis, what alternatives are different? Is that, is that from the non-stadium alternative, I think the SEQUA did?
So, I will, I will ask Eric to come up and kind of talk about the SEQUA analysis.
Sure. So, with SEQUA, you develop alternatives as part of the scoping process once, three things have been done. Once you have developed a project description of the project that you're studying as the project, two, that you have set forth what the project goals are, because all the alternative, all the alternatives proposed are valued as, against the project alternatives, and after you've, you know, filed the notice of preparation, the EIR, and you go into the scoping process. So, it is premature at this point to say what will or won't be studied as part of the EIR, but during the EIR process, all, you know, recommended alternatives or all alternatives that will be put forward will be evaluated against, like you said, the project description, the project goals, and, you know, it'll be a, a report back as part of the EIR on which alternatives we're studying, which we're studying with what depth and why.
Yes, Ms. Brunner?
So, I understand the first part of the answer, that it's the project, the money comes out of Coliseum. But for the EIR, talking about the site, how do you get to a site that's so far, are you going to have the- you going to have the same problem because of the money?
No, it's a different evaluation criteria. So I think what Mr. Blackwell is saying is that you can't really use the money to study that alternative as part of the planning process. The EIR process, the money will go to study the alternatives that are reasonable and meet project objectives or are environmentally superior in one sense.
And be anywhere in the city.
Because these are regional draws, could actually be sites outside of the city, in fact. So that's a much different set of criteria for which to evaluate alternatives.
All right. We're going to call the public speaker, Senator.
What's your name? It's Paul. Excuse me, please, close your phone and leave the door. Daniel Tokeet. Keith Salden. Steve Dickbe. Godfather Grease Jones. Mike Smith. Chris Dobbins. Martha Cassio. Jay Lee's. Dr. Death. That's why I said he's Dr. Death. Jamie Rahimi Serrano. Randolph Whitney. Kevin Anthony Stewart. Monselito To. Old Town Pirate. Michael Johnson. David Grant. Rob Rivera. Ray Kidd.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, President Reed, staff. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Chris Dobbins. I'm one of the co-founders of SaveOaklandSports.org. I'm also one of the county appointees to the Coliseum Joint Foundation for the School Board. And I'm a season ticket holder and been for a long time for all three teams. SaveOaklandSports, I want to thank Mr. Blackwell for your hard work on this matter, the rest of the staff and council. SaveOaklandSports, collection of business leaders, community members, and fans that are one goal, basically to keep all three teams, the A's, the Raiders, and Warriors here in Oakland. Oakland has been presented, is the basically center for the population in the Bay Area, centers in Oakland East Bay. It's also the regional transportation hub. And the Coliseum site is the prime location with Amtrak, with the BART train, with the perfect ingress egress off of the A-8 corridor. Also, the great weather we have here in Oakland makes it the prime location to keep all three teams. Roughly, speaking, every time there's a Raider game, we have at least 10 a year, there's roughly 1,200 jobs generated by that one single Raider game. For the A's and Warriors, it figures around 700. Working with the school district, many of our employees have part-time jobs at the Coliseum. And so this not only will keep the civic value, keeping the teams here, but also will give jobs and opportunities as well. The Coliseum project, which our organization strongly endorses, will only additionally capture a lot of the tax revenue that would come in. And a lot of the fans that are coming in and leaving the city currently could come in and stay and spend their money here in Oakland. Much like what Mayor Johnson did up in Sacramento, galvanized community support when the team, Sacramento Kings, looked lost. This, we urge the council and the mayor as well to take this, use that opportunity to keep our teams here in Oakland. You can check our website out, SaveOaklandSports.org. We, as Mr. Blackwell said, Thomas said the essence with the court ruling yesterday in Santa Clara, the Niners project is go-ahead and green light. We want to urge the council to move forward on this project. Let's keep all our teams in Oakland. Let's stay Oakland. So back here, also, along with Don House. Right now, if you're looking at, I'm looking at each one of you guys, and we're looking at 111 years of this being destroyed. Have any one of you guys been to the game? Have you guys would like that to be destroyed? Think about the children. Each one of us that is standing here, we look at that. We look at the future. And we want to make Oakland better. That's what we're here for. Everybody's been talking about the homicides. I know there was like 24 mentioned. Can you just imagine the impact that would even increase it if it spawned to another city? We need to make this city better. Yeah, I might be a San Jose resident, but in my heart, I'm open. So all that matters right now is please, think about this. Think about the kids and think about Oakland. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council, and fellow Oaklanders. My name is Keith Saldan. I am a member of the organization SaveOaklandSports. I am also the show producer of internet sports radio talk show, A-Span Radio. I am here along with everyone else here to highly encourage that the city council passes both of these resolutions and to also state that it's come to a point now where this is no longer Oakland's problem. This is the entire East Bay's problem. One thing that the entire city Oakland needs to do is, should this resolution pass, is they need to get the leaders of other East Bay cities, as well as other cities in Northern California, to help out with funding this project and getting it off the ground. Let me just state for the record here that a loss of even just one of these teams will be a problem. But to lose all three of these teams will be an economic disaster for the East Bay. Picture 20 years, the result of this happened. Businesses, concerts, you know, sporting events don't want to come here? They're going to see Oakland drop the ball. They couldn't keep their teams. Why should we bother going there to have our events when they can't even keep three teams there? The bottom line is, this resolution needs to pass because again, the future of the city of Oakland's not at stake anymore. The future of the entire East Bay is at stake. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Death, and I'm here on behalf of most of the Raider Nation and most Oakland fans. We are here to humbly ask you to please vote yes to fund the developers and environmental impact report for the Coliseum City. The Raiders, A's, and Warriors are more than just sports teams to the cities of Oakland and County of Alameda. At a bare minimum, they are an industry that employs thousands of people and raises hundreds of thousands of dollars for charities in and around Oakland every single year. A little-known fact about our East Coast Bay pro athletes and fans like ourselves is that we are involved in charity events year-round. Take the time to scratch beneath the surface and find out who we are and what our three professional sports franchises means to us. Tonight, you are voting for more than yes and a no. Tonight, you are voting for the future of Oakland. It is in your hands. That also means you can't forget the past. All three of these sports franchises, if they leave, that's 111 years of tradition for professional sports franchises here in Oakland that will be gone forever. It would be truly sad and devastating to the economy, the reputation, and pride of Oakland. We know that it will good, that it will cost a good amount of money to build the proposed Coliseum City. However, you have to spend money to make money. The city of Oakland already has one foot of the door by already owning the land to where the stadiums could be built. Because of the land proximity to BART, rail, Oakland Airport, and the 880, 680 freeways, the project may be eligible for a transit-oriented development fund, which I think we talked about earlier, for about $40 million. That's not to mention the hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs and businesses that could bring Northern California. Mr. Reed, I know that you have had positive influence in this city. I humbly ask you and your team to continue and be positive contributor to our city.
Good evening to everybody, and everybody's tired, ready to go home. I just blessed and thankful, I woke up this morning, speak my voice. I come from Brentwood, out half a way from here. I'm official mascot of the Black Hole of the Raiders. We are associated with over 65 events a year. You can look me up, I'm cool. I'm here with Craig Johnson from the Boys and Girls Club outreach. And I can do my research and everything, I just know Oakland is a state, Oakland, the Raiders is there. The kids' generation is what's up. The tree that you have in the logo, Oakland, the roots are growing. Don't cut the roots down. Let it grow. Fertilize it, guys. Women, come on. We need your love. It's about be kind to each other, be truthful. One thing before I go, I gotta say one thing. Ms. Brooks, I'm from Brentwood. I know nothing about it but the game. But I came one time to orchestrate an event for the kids. And who did I see? I was like, who's that lady? And it was Ms. Brooks. So I gotta give it to Ms. Brooks, everybody.
Love. I'll say I'm grateful, thank you. Mr. Reed, Ms. Brooks, because with Boys and Girls without me from Fairfax, I did invite you all to our event. I did bring the Black Hole. And it's very important because you can make the change today. It's up to you. Now, the focus of the Oakland Raiders, our Davis is gone. But guess what? Your spirit is still alive. We talk about the Raider Nation, we talk about the world. The world is watching. Your decision. Your decision starts tonight. Vote yes.
Amen. I'm a yes. He gives that natural superthetism, bro.
She needs to act. He offered to put me on his shoulders.
Good evening. I heard a lot of talk tonight about the future, and I help represent that future. I'm a 30-year-old single dad with two kids. I grew up in a bad neighborhood, no drugs, and getting infested. And I would get to leave that in the summertime and go to baseball games every day. A lot of the kids that I left those neighborhoods to go to ballgames to watch, they're not here today. They're in prison, they're dead. And I got that escape. You know, my parents would take me to remember a half, let's live off forever. Now I get to sit there and take both my children and experience the same things. And as you can see, we have family here. This isn't a group of fans, this is a family, you know? And it's a smart investment to make in the future. If there's no hope for the future, then there's no hope here. You know, who are we going to leave anything to? Who are we going to have? Continue our legacy. If you take three teams away that have been here since the 60s, you know, that's, they're talking about the roots there. You know, it's an intricate part of our economy. When you think about Oakland, when I think about Oakland, I think about the Oaklans, I think about the Golden State Warriors, I think about the Oakland Raiders. You know, these are three staples, big business, create a lot of jobs. People can talk about statistics all day. You know, but the bottom line is, you get rid of the team, you get rid of the big part of Oakland, you get rid of part of Oakland's soul. And if Oakland has no soul, what does it have?
Good evening to the city council of Oakland and everybody in this room. It's been very interesting sitting here tonight and listening to what's going on. And this is very much a pressing matter, having sports in Oakland. Our organization that's called Mob Charities, Mob means making Oakland better. We've been hosting along this tailgate NFL for the last 13 to 14 years. And our tailgate is geared toward charity, starting with local-based charities and making Oakland better. And one of the greatest things that sports has to present in a community and in the lives of kids and adults is something positive. And there's a lot of money that's involved with trying to erect stadiums, trying to keep teams going. But this would be one of the greatest things that I can remember growing up in this community to ever happen if you guys vote yes on this proposal. And for, this would be one of the greatest things to move forward, to fight for, regardless of the obstacles are, and make Oakland better. So please, vote yes on this proposal. Take care.
Yes, I'd like to say, good evening to each and every one of you. I just hope that we can start this off with a little blessing because we need this. I think I've grown up in the city all my life, and if I know one thing, I know that there's one thing that we always have press about in the news, and it's about our murder rate. What I've seen in this city when it comes to sports is under her lull to any city I've been to when it comes to sport. And I'm not just talking about the Raiders. I mean the Raiders, the Warriors, and the A's. I don't know if you guys really embrace it like we do, but it's more than just sports for us. This is a lifestyle for us. And for us to lose any of these teams would be devastating to Oakland. I lived in the city. I grew up in West Oakland, lived in East Oakland, and I can tell you right now, it is getting worse. And the only thing I can say that if you guys vote on this, you guys are doing something not only because you're making a vote of yes, but you guys are sending a message out to everybody else that, yeah, we number five for one of the places to visit in New York Times, but we better than that. Oakland, we are way better than that. I know each of you guys have right now the power to do something that has never been done in Oakland, to put us where we need to be. We have never hit that plateau, and I think it's about time that we need to just put our, what our differences is aside in this city. And as a city, we come together as a whole, and we do something that we know can make this city be a premier city. I love my city, and I want to see my city be a premier city. I hope you guys, I hope you guys vote, I hope you pass this resolution because we need this more than anything else. If we need anything in Oakland, we need jobs. We need jobs, and this will bring jobs. And you guys have the power to do that. And with that said, God bless, and I hope you guys make the right decision. Have a good night.
Good evening, city council members. For the record, I'm Michael Johnson, and I wanted to talk about support for these two resolutions. Quite frankly, when I think about or try to imagine the city of Oakland without compression on sports teams, and I don't have to think too hard, that city exists already. It's called Detroit. When you go into that airport and you drive out of that airport, you have police officers who are raising revenues by porting their guns, trying to get people for speeding. It's important, I think, that economic development and investment in this area of our city is sorely needed. I'm a resident of Oakland, particularly from East Oakland, so I know what that community's like. What I like about these two resolutions is the collaboration, the cooperation, and the communication that I think they possess. I think that's important. This project possesses the potential for both public and private partnership, the likes of which Oakland has never seen before. So we need to act. We need to act now. This is an opportunity for us to make a difference in Oakland, and I hope you support these proposals.
I want to point out that we have the mayor at the back of the room, and I think we need to recognize that this is sounding more and more like it's going to be an 8-0 vote. And thanks to Mayor's leadership, standing behind this agenda, because this is a very political hot potato for many years, and there's some other special things that need to be recognized. The council member, President Reed, has been leading this charge as the District Seven leader, the president, and the council. Thankfully, I had many meetings with JPA presidents and Chairman Ignatius Dela Fuente, and his leadership has been fantastic from a JPA standpoint to put this on the agenda. And I have to point out, I don't know if many people recognize in this room, what Destiny Brooks has done, is that she has essentially cracked open the management opportunity to open up the RFP for the management of these two facilities of the arena and the Coliseum. If it weren't for Miss Destiny Brooks and the leadership of Mr. Dela Fuente, we would not have these international groups looking at the opportunity and getting all of the international attention that we're getting right now, which is within the sports world that's become one of the key drivers for Oakland at this time. I'm a local owner, I own a local business here. I'm on the Airport Area Business Association. I took on this charge because I really wanted, I was feeling very passionate about this. We launched a recent group called SaveOaklandSports. You can feel the pressure in the room. The people are here because they love Oakland, they love the sports, and the teams are a real driver for the community. The Coliseum City commitment, it creates confidence. And this is the first thing, I know you know that, but you know, it really takes Team Oakland, it takes the efforts of the county, the city, of course, BART, the port, and all of the agencies coming together and working as Team Oakland. You've done that so well in other areas. You've done it for the airport expansion, you've done it for the airport connector, the Coliseum BART TOE is coming along. I think it's something that if everybody can kind of put down their guard and really work together and learn from the past mistakes and really make something of this, this kind of commitment, as Ignatius said, this turns the tables for negotiating with those teams and keeping the sex in the city. Thank you.
Okay, I hope you guys still got something, something left, because this is very important to all these, all these people that are talking right now on this, on this particular subject. My name is Rob Rivera, I'm also a member of SaveOaklandSports. This may seem trivial after all the back and forth and stuff that we just witnessed over a couple hours period, but this is not trivial. This is probably the most important thing that you guys will ever decide upon. Picture 20 years from now, just as that gentleman mentioned, no teams, no A's, no Warriors, no Raiders. Dilapidated buildings, graffiti coming up everywhere. Businesses do not want to be a part of that. They're going to shuttle out of here as fast as possible can be, and no new businesses are going to want to come in. It's time for us to step out of the shadows, awaken the sleeping giant, man. I mean, this is Oakland. We have the opportunity here to do something so very powerful. Let's get out of San Francisco's shadow. Let's get this thing done, not only tonight, but pushing it forward. And then after that, guys, think about all the businesses that are gonna wanna come into Oakland. Spend their money here, pay their taxes here, and all the fans that are gonna want to stay on the tour, spend money in the restaurants and so forth. This is big, guys. This is an opportunity of a lifetime, and this is only one chance we get. We blow this, we're not gonna get another chance. We're not gonna ever get any other sports franchises here. And the teams that have put Oakland on their chest, have put Oakland on the map, we're not gonna have that again. Now, what's gonna happen to Oakland? Sound is saying everybody else is gonna swoop past us. We're gonna be everybody's little stepchild. I'm tired of being snickered at. I'm tired of when people talk about Oakland, they talk in a joking manner. If you listen to the media, print, radio, television, everybody down to Oakland. You guys should be sick of it. It's time that we stand up, defend this city, and make it as great as it could possibly be. Let's get this thing done. Let's push it forward, man. Oakland is great, let's make it greater. All right? If not, all these places that we're talking about, the ones that closed and the ones that you opened, what are you gonna do twenty years from now? How hard is it gonna be to be able to get centers like that open when no businesses are here prepared to pay taxes? You guys think you've got money problems now? You've got tremendous money problems coming up.
Council President Reed, Council Members, Mayor Claude. My name is Paul Young. I'm with the Oakland Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of our over a thousand business members, I urge you to support the resolutions before you tonight. Uh, this is an important project. I want to salute, uh, the City Administrator, the Assistant City Administrator, for their process of bringing in, uh, high caliber professionals to help in the development and planning process. Uh, I also want to bring attention to, uh, something in the staff report to all of you, uh, about the planning process. And it says here that it must be built upon broad public involvement, including public agencies, the professional sports franchises, of course, community members, neighborhood groups, and business organizations, business owners, property owners, and developers. Because of course, these three teams and, and anyone around these development areas, the business matters. Being able to make money matters. The, the public agencies can make, uh, investments that make sense for them. Uh, the days and times where perhaps millions of dollars might have been available are probably behind us. So these projects have to make financial sense. And so it seems a, a great project here to bring in the planning process and to request involvement from all the stakeholders that are going to have to make the project make sense so that we can save the A's, save the Raiders, and save the Warriors. So again, on behalf of our thousand business members, we urge you to support the two measures before you tonight. Thank you.
Hello, Council. Uh, I want to thank you guys for your time tonight. My name is David Burnett. I'm a resident and a business owner in Alameda County here. And I just wanted to say I'm a huge East Bay sports fan. And quite frankly, I don't know what I'd do without it. And I'm sure you probably know people in your family who are the same way. What would they do without a, a sports franchise? And I wore my, uh, We Believe t-shirt. Um, I don't know if you, if anybody remembers the playoffs a few years ago. And, uh, what that playoff run did, and when we were good and winning, uh, what it did with my family and how we related to that. Uh, I think our kids and, and our, our future, our neighborhoods should all experience that feeling that I had in my family when, when I was, you know, five or ten years ago, whenever that playoff run went. And I think it's really important for our future, uh, for this, um, project to pass. And, uh, I mean, the NFL, National Football League, only has, uh, thirty-two, uh, franchises awarded. We're lucky enough to have one of them. Um, what if one day we were awarded a Super Bowl and, uh, Oakland got internationally known? Think about that. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Uh, I'm here to speak about, you know, for you guys to please, and I urge you guys to pass this resolution uh, because it will have a tremendous effect in the city of Oakland. Uh, I, I was born and raised in East Oakland. And I know the, I know how much the A's are part of my life. It can help the kids, you know, around the East Oakland community, how bad it is out there. And imagine that it turned out to be a shell. It'll be even worse. Okay? I am part of the Resapian Organization that takes kids from East Oakland into the baseball games. And we feed them, and we have volunteers. We all, we, we do it with our own money. And, and, and if, if the A's leave, what do they have to do with this organization? The kids, what are they gonna have to? The kids do, the kids do live with sports. They, they're part of sports. It's part of us. Okay? And, and on the twenty-eighth of March, the A's will be in Japan wearing this shirt. It says Oakland on it. Okay? It'll be showing all over the world. All right? Now imagine if they leave. What's, what's gonna say on this jersey? It's not gonna say Oakland anymore. Do you guys want that? We are number five in the New York Times. Let's be number one. Let's show off Oakland. Let's show Oakland to do it and put on the A's hat. Every night's an A's play. I urge you guys. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I'm, uh, Chris Fry Lopez. Um, these teams, they bring so much to our community. I, I, I think about, uh, how much nicer Mossfield Park is after, uh, the Warriors helping to furnish it. And, um, how Namdi Asomugha, when he comes to the East Oakland Youth Center and contributes so much. And, and they really, they really contribute so much to our community. But the other thing these teams do, as, as other people mention, is, is they bring an image of our community to the outside world that has nothing to do with violence or drugs. It's a positive image, so the whole world gets to notice. And I believe that if, uh, Coliseum City did come to fruition, that it would truly make Oakland a destination city. Uh, it would do for Oakland what, uh, what Monterey Aquarium did for Monterey. Businesses and everything could be built around it. So I highly encourage you guys to, to make this happen. Um, since everyone touched upon things I was gonna touch upon economically, I would, I'd just like to use this opportunity to quickly recite the Autumn Wind with my fellow Raider Nation. The Autumn Wind is a pirate, blustering in from sea. With a rollicking song, he sweeps along, swaddering boisterously. His face is weather beaten. He wears a hooded sash with a silver hat about his head and a bristling black moustache. He growls as he storms the country, a villain big and bold. And the trees all shake and quiver and quake as he robs another gold. The Autumn Wind is a raider, pillaging just for fun. He'll knock you round and upside down and laugh when he's conquered the world.
Hi, my name is Rick Till. I know it's been a long night and everyone has droopy eyebrows, so thank you for indulging me just a couple minutes. Uh, unfortunately, these teams are private businesses. They're owned by people and every team has a value. They can be sold for certain prices. And, but these sports teams are really priceless commodities. You can't put a value on them. You look at a city like Indianapolis that just hosted the Super Bowl. They're not a big league city. They don't have a big league team. You look at Seattle and Kansas City, they've lost NBA franchises. Kansas City built an arena, hoping one would come. Nothing has come there. Seattle is building one, hoping one will come. No one's going there right now. Los Angeles is building a football stadium, hoping someone will come. We have all these teams right now. We have all of them. We have to stick with them. This is such a great town. My great grandfather came to the dedication of this building. President William Howard Tathless here. My, my blood runs deep with this city. I love this city. I think it's a fantastic city. But we can't let these priceless business commodities leave our city because there is no value to them outside of them being priceless. We have to hold on them for our civic pride, for the jobs, tax revenue, and everything else that goes with it. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Sarah Dunaway. And unlike most of the people who've spoken before you tonight, I did not grow up in Oakland. Um, I actually moved here two thousand and five. But my family was actually from here. My grandfather used to work in the front office at the Coliseum. Um, so I was always raised a A's fan, even when I was growing up in Arkansas in the morning, though we really understood it. And somehow I ended up here. And I'm actually not just speaking to you today as an A's season ticket holder, but also as the Business Development Manager of a small, local, emerging business here in Oakland. A business that, thanks to SLEB set-asides and DVE set-asides on local projects, has been able to pull through the recession. And unlike so many other firms that have had to close down, big public projects like this with local, small disadvantaged, underutilized disadvantaged businesses have been able to stay with their doors open in Oakland. I am in Oakland every single day because of projects like Coliseum City would be. With local goals, local business participation, putting people like myself, who's never put a shovel in the ground, at my desk every day, giving me a reason to stay in Oakland and spend my money in Oakland, and giving me the ability to continue supporting the team that I love every season. So I strongly urge you, as a season ticket holder for the A's, as an architecture, engineering, and construction management design professional, to support these two resolutions.
Yes, good evening. Once again, my name is Mansa. I'm, uh, out of District Three, West Oakland. I'm here, I was here years ago, man. I'm in support of all these teams. But there is a study going on. I talked to, uh, Mr. Blackwell. He says that it would derail this stuff if you set some money aside to put a Oakland baseball team over the freeway right down the street from here. Now, I think if you wanna build two downtown O'Learys, you know, you should understand that what you're doing with the Coliseum is fine. But we don't need two downtown O'Learys. We need to specify the baseball field for right up the street, you know? And try to get some money for it. If you cannot use the funds from that, um, state granted study, then ask the council and, and some of the staff to try to come up with some funds. I think it's important, there used to be a little store, I was trying to come up with the name the other day, uh, Tollamis. It went out of business. If you put this baseball stadium on the freeway, right here, right down the street, you know, with walking distance, imagine all the businesses that will pop up in the black community over here. Imagine all the, the, the vibe blues that we might get to start going to baseball games again. You did. They, what about the Marriott Hotel? You don't want, you know, when you go to Las Vegas, they got Old Town and Uptown? You know, the Old Town is, is all right, but if the Fremont is, is, is dead. One of the guys who supports the Raiders, I support them too, said that Oakland's a ghost town after the Sixty-Fourteen on Friday nights. We know that. Put the baseball team here. Now, the reason you're moving out there is because that money's out here. I understand that. But this plan hadn't come to form then. You know, if most of you know it's a good idea, it's a good idea, but, but the money's already set. So try to find some dollars to make this plan, uh, study this piece and see if it can be an alternative to, uh, the President.
Good evening, uh, members of Council. Uh, um, Mr. Lado and Mr. Kidd have ceded their time today.
Is Mr. Kidd present? Is Mr. Lado?
My name is Brian Runalde. I'm an architect and a urban planner. And I live here in Oakland and been a planning consultant for forty years. And while I support this legislation, uh, I think, uh, the scope should be controlled. And I disagree, uh, with Mr. Blackwell's analysis that redevelopment funds cannot be allocated to another area. What I'm talking about is Ninety-Eighty is spending some of the four million dollars on studying the feasibility of Ninety-Eighty Park, um, uh, over the freeway, consistent with the Caltrans scope of work, which I sent to Mr. Blackwell. Um, redevelopment projects allow you to spend money outside the redevelopment area if they benefit the, uh, area that, uh, the project is within. And I think we're talking about the city of Oakland. Even though we're talking about Coliseum City, I think we're, we're talking about retaining these teams all in Oakland. The number one criterion that Major League Baseball has for locating, uh, a ballpark is it be downtown, near public transportation. And this is, uh, why, uh, Mr. Bob, uh, suggested it, uh, where Forest City built their, um, uh, partner building. But, uh, Ninety-Eighty Park is only down the street from, uh, uh, that, that location. Um, so I think it's, uh, time that, you know, we, we try to, uh, ring in the wagons here in Oakland. We have a, a downtown that we've got, Uptown, uh, Old Town, uh, uh, we call it, uh, City Center. All these things are not connected. We need to connect them and we need to have, we put as many activities in, uh, in downtown as we can. Um, and I think, uh, that, uh, this is financeable without redevelopment money. The deck could be built by just simply relocating two ramps, which would cost about thirty million dollars. The land rent alone, if using the city of San Francisco, uh, rent from, uh, the Giants is three million a year. Oakland should be able to get a million and a half a year and capitalize that at five percent and get thirty million dollars. So if you can't take the money out of this redevelopment study, advance it from the general fund to be reimbursed by rent revenue. We need to take advantage of this, of these air rights. It's ten acres right in the downtown, separating West Oakland from downtown. Uh, we need that, we, we need to reconnect downtown since West Oakland. And, uh, uh, and I want to make one final study. I cannot, uh, uh, Mr. Blackwell talked about studying alternatives. Those alternatives included, including, uh, alternatives that didn't have any stadium in them at all. Well, if you don't have any stadium in them at all, where does the stadium go? If it went downtown, then, uh, that would be part of the same study. It's part of the same alternative study. Um, uh, and it's good public policy to have alternatives. It's good public policy to have options and contingencies. To put all your eggs in the Coliseum basket is ridiculous, um, and, and basically a waste of public, uh, money. So I, uh, ask you to, uh, consider, uh, studying and moving it up, uh, the Ninety-Eighty Park alternative so we can go through Caltrans, go through the process, just like Minneapolis did it with one year for Target Field. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Larry Jackson. Some of you know me. And you know me very well. I've been at this since two thousand. I brought you the proposal for Uptown. I brought you the proposal for Lady College. I brought, I brought you the proposal for Coliseum City two years ago. Some of you have my binder. Fifty years ago, the, the city leaders of Oakland made a decision that was not very well received, but to go ahead and build a sports complex. Now, maybe they didn't build the best one in the world, but they sure know where to put it. That location is fantastic. And now you have an opportunity to further what they started, to continue what they started. You have a chance to put a Coliseum City, a facility that only has one other period in this country, and that's in Philadelphia. Take a look at what that facility has done since it's opened. You have three stadiums, three, uh, two stadiums and arena, right in one spot, and they make money. And I can guarantee you, they got a lot of opposition against that. Oakland needs to step into the future. They need to step into the future for our own survival. The jobs that are there, that have stayed there, the teams that have stayed. And they're right, when those teams go, Major League Baseball, the NBA, NFL, they will not look back here again. There's no way. We have a chance to solidify that, so that San Jose, Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Francisco can go somewhere else to rob somebody else of their teams. Not us, not Oakland. Our national identity is defined by what we see on the news at night, and you know it's not good. We have a chance to use sports, sports, as a national identity that is positive across this country, around this world. You have a banner out there. When I came out in the, uh, garage, it says Invest in Oakland. You invest in Oakland. And the best we can do is bring it to Oakland. Thank you. Thank you.
What about the last four names? Does that call your name? Or just the...
No, I had 50 seconds left. Can I just say something real quick? It's about alternatives. Do you see the victory court?
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. You had a good chance to speak. That's it.
Can you just see Victory Court?
Would you just go sit down? Go sit down, please. You already spoke.
Larry Jackson, Jorge Leon, John Mohammed, and Terrence Cantal. Only two.
John Mohammed. Mr. Cantal. It's gone, and Larry just spoke. Alright, so is that it? Mr. Downey?
Hi, hi. Actually, it's early for us, so we listen to you. Sometimes we hear the 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, so don't feel bad. So let me start, thank you, Mr. Blackwell. I think there is definitely a lot of work that you start doing. From the get-go, I'm gonna tell you that I'm not for support of the proposal in front of us tonight. They're literally absolutely clear, you know? I think that, I understand that all of you are very passionate about the three teams that we have, and I think the city is. Because I think that if any city has gone really all of our way to retain those teams, I think it's Oakland. So I hear you when you say SOS, but at the same time, I also believe that that Coliseum is the best site anywhere. So we don't have to bar them and beg for our teams to really want to be here, because we know that I think they're here because it's the best possible site that it is. At the same time, we have the responsibility to negotiate with these teams and for them to understand that they are an asset, but at the same time, they have to be people that want to be here. And so far, really, nobody wants to take them away. They didn't want to, they really wanted to leave and say they want to leave and go somewhere else. I do believe that it's our responsibility to do the best we can to retain these assets. At the same time, that we cannot forget that we are subsidizing these sports franchises at the tune of $10 million a year. We have the responsibility to correct that, the responsibility to do better than what we did before. Just because we made a mistake, that also means that we can do a better job the next time, and this is the next time. I believe that, and I've been saying from the beginning to my president, Mr. Reed, and to my colleagues, that the A's and the Raiders belong in the Coliseum. And I think that the way that they belong in the Coliseum, by understanding that they have to be a good deal for the city and a good deal for the team. So I think that it's imperative for us to understand that at the same time that we have that responsibility. Hopefully, you will do the same with Blue Wolf and with the Raiders. I think you should be as passionate and going to demand that they do a good job for Oakland as we want to do for them. And transferring one city to the other is not going to work. We have the best site. We are prepared to work hard, but at the same time, I'm not prepared to subsidize and to go to the point that the team believe that we have to do everything that we can do to, or everything that is possible for us to do for them to stay. We want them to stay, but it takes to a tangle. And I want to be absolutely clear, Mr. Blackwell, that I think that the proposal in front of us tonight is not only to look at Coliseum City, with a stadium or without a stadium. Because I think that otherwise, we would not be doing our job to make sure that the $3 point plus million that we're going to spend will be well spent and will get a product that allows us to revitalize that area and to attract businesses and do what I think that a lot of the fans want us to do, recognizing that sometimes we don't have the ability to force people to stay if they don't want to stay. We want them to stay, but I don't think that we can force them to stay. We've been working on trying to deal with the A's, trying to deal with Major League Baseball. And so far, we are the only ones that are going to the dance and nobody's dancing back the way they should be. And I think that hopefully, tonight, we send it one more message that we really, that we want to work with sports franchises, that we want to make sure that we build Coliseum City. But I think that they have to get the message that it's got to be two ways. And hopefully, we are again tonight, as the city, as the council, sending a signal, and hopefully, we get the same return. So we'll be prepared to support the proposition tonight, and hopefully, we'll come back with a better product than what we came last time, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
I heard Mr. Delafontes say that it takes two to dance. It also takes, you know, it almost seems like the one person in the relationship is saying that you don't talk to them like you used to. And so, and so I think in the last year, we've started to make moves, we're talking to the teams in a way that they understand. I think that the contract for the management company at the facilities, I think that this project and this E&amp;A starts to communicate in a way that shows serious discussion and serious movement. And I think that we put together stellar teams, our oncoming staff are doing that. And I'm looking forward to moving, not just for the sake of the teams, but for the sake of that area. Because we're talking about coming up with a plan that moves that area forward. And so if you are, Mr. Reed is... No, okay, so if you're moving it, I'll second it.
No, I just want to speak, because I don't think there's anyone in this council chamber or in city staff that's spent more time on this issue than I am. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Well, having spent two years working on Victory Court for the A's, really wanting the A's to stay, I want to say congratulations, Mr. Reed. Mr. Reed has been pushing the Coliseum for the sports teams since I can remember. So... And the only reason we were not looking at the Coliseum was because the A's were telling us that they wouldn't go there. And so we looked at an alternative because we were trying to desperately keep them. And I agree with Mr. Delafontes, we were negotiating with ourselves. It was not in negotiations. So if this, I mean, I'm in total support if this moves us forward. I really hope all three teams take this seriously. I hope they really do negotiate with us. I just want to address the other issue about the alternative. And the reason that I am interested in over the freeway is because I think it is possible the A's will come back to us and say, "We still don't want to be in the Coliseum." I think that, you know, I think it makes sense for them to be there with the two other teams. So I think at some point, we may have to look somewhere else. We know we can't afford Victory Court. I don't know if we could even afford over the freeway. So what I would like to say, and I understand today that city staff is saying that you can't take that money out to do that, so I'm not requesting that today. But I think we need to do two things. I think we need city staff, because they tell me offline, but not publicly, to really give us an analysis of the feasibility of doing it over the freeway. Because I don't want to keep pushing something if city staff is telling us that's not feasible. So I don't want to ask for a lot of work, but I think there's been some work done on it, and I think it would be a good idea at some point to bring that to us, so we know the pros and the cons from city staff's position. Because at some point, if we're putting to find by having to do something different, we do need to be prepared to do that. So I am in total support. And Mr. Reed, congratulations.
I'm also really excited about this opportunity tonight. As an Oakland native, I grew up eating bite of blue berry muffins and... And remember my mom letting me miss school in 1981 when the Raiders won the World Series, their last year before leaving us for LA? So it is very exciting and I thank Mr. Blackwell for the energy and intelligence that he is bringing. I was, I have some concerns which need to be fully addressed as far as what do we get for our pre-development costs as part of the E&amp;A? And I can assure you, it's a long list of variables. The one thing, we all want all three of our teams to stay. We want it so badly. But we don't totally control that. And so we also have to be mindful that there are other people that potentially control those decisions. And as Mr. Blackwell said, both of these contracts will also include analysis that include scenarios if one or more of our teams do leave us despite our absolute best efforts to keep them here. And so I don't know whoever's going to make the motion, but it struck me that the resolution itself did not reference that the work will include non-stadium alternatives. So Mr. Blackwell drafted some language we want to add, a whereas, resolved paragraph that just specifically states that, for the record, as part of the actual legislation adopted. And then just, you know, the other thing, I feel like talking to people out there about this project, the term Coliseum City, I think doesn't adequately describe just how big, what a big dream this is. I was talking to Councilwoman Kaplan about this last night. We were both like, "We should call this Oakland Live." It's not part of the motion or anything, I just put it out there. So people understand this is, we're not just talking about a Coliseum. We're talking about a whole entertainment complex. We're talking about an office park with great jobs. It's a bigger vision than just a sports facility. That's the catalyst for it, but it's a much bigger vision. So anyway, I just throw that out there. But whoever's making the motion, if you are interested, again, it's part of the intent. I just always think it's great to put it in the legislation. The language that Mr. Blackwell drafted, which was "to guard against an overreliance on the presence of professional sports franchises for the future development of the Coliseum site, the project design, specific plan, and EIR shall include non-stadium alternatives." So if the maker of the motion wants to include that, I think that would just better set the record. Thank you.
And I move because I think that, that was one of the, Mr. President, that was one of the issues that we'll spend this money and we have alternatives. So I move that.
So that would go into not the master developer part, but the, is it the planning and the surveying part?
Yeah, the industrial services contractor, that's the place.
That's where that language would be. But that's always been the case, Miss Shaw. That big visual, trying to get people to believe it, to see it. So I don't want to take credit for it, but I've worked on it longer than anyone in this constituency. And that's always been the case. And so I want to thank the credit for moving aside and forward. Because I couldn't convince Walter Cohen, who did have a conversation with the mayor and took everything that I first talked with him about and had JBR put it down in paper. Couldn't get Craig Hosh to see the vision, you couldn't get Dan Lindheim to see the vision, you couldn't get Jerry Graham to see the vision. But I'm glad that all of you see the vision, and I'm glad the mayor tried to take credit for something. So I have to thank you. And I want to thank you, Councilman DeShaw, because of the one-year letter and the letter that Mayor Dillon sent to Major League Baseball, we still wouldn't, we would not be in the game. We spent a lot of meetings sitting in that room with Major League Baseball. I've gone over the alternatives. And so I just want to thank you, because you have the foresight to get Mayor Dillon to write that letter and keep us in the game. So I just want to thank you. Ms. Naidell, you have a cue.
Very briefly, my constituents are very adamantly in support of the 980 alternative, so I thank Ms. DeShaw for raising that issue of having come back to us with some feasibility analysis and we should put that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Naidell. Let me just say this. I mean, when we, I mean, this whole vision was about changing this city, changing it for a lifetime. And as I've often said, not just yesterday, but the year before, the year before that, that if we do nothing, that we could wind up losing every single sports franchise that we have in the city. And so finally, people have listened, and finally, people have bought into this vision. I remember when Lou Wolf first acquired the Oakland A's, and I met with him, and we gave him this vision of what is now called Coliseum City. And we gave him that vision. He took that same vision that we had already put down in paper and created his own vision of how to move, how to move the A's from Oakland to San Jose. But then he also came up with this vision that turned Mr. Delafontes' district all the way up to 66, that had 100 property owners and knew that it wasn't real. Because we would never use him in a domain in trying to seize all those pieces of property. So he took that vision that we presented to him in that meeting and took it down with San Jose and came up with his own concept of what we've been suggesting for the last 16 years, of how that Coliseum area could be developed. And then, and I tell people, if you can imagine the vision of what you could do out there, you have the Oakland Lummy Base anchoring the western part of the city, all the giants that you can create. And then if Major League Baseball tell Lou Wolf, Oakland's presented you with two options, either the Coliseum, two sites to Coliseum, or either of them called Victory Court, that either you stay in Oakland or you put the team up to sell, and then you get an honor that would be... And that you would get an honor that would fill in the middle of the city in Victory Court. So now you have the east and the west built out, and you fill it in the middle with a baseball only stadium. And then you have what's being going on in Jack London Square. You have the signature property of the night project. Oakland would never be the same. It would be one of the most incredible cities in this country, more so than what it is right now. So I'm just, I'm just finally glad that someone caught the vision that we've been trying to articulate to city managers and city directors, and finally, someone caught the vision. And I just hope it's not too late, that we can in fact keep the Raiders and build a football on the stadium, and that we can keep the Oakland A's, and that we can convince the Warriors that instead of building a new arena in San Francisco, that you can do it right here and be something like Eddie G did down at LA with LA Live. This city is going to, if we can do that, this city is going to be truly, truly amazing. So I want to just end on that note. Motion by Vice Mayor Brooks. Motion by Mr. Delafontes, seconded by Vice Mayor Brooks, all in favor, signed by San On.
Aye.
Does it post? All right.
It's scary, but I wanted to know.
Can you guys, can you guys hold the noise down?